Like to call the meeting in order, please. Casey, do you mind, are we going to keep those doors open or the back doors?
It doesn't matter. The weather can start working really good out there.
All right.
I think they're, they want it open, I think.
Leave, we're going to leave them open.
Yeah.
For now, we'll leave them open. Let's rise for a pledge of the flag, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Roll call noted that all eight of eight present board members are present. Agenda item two, there was an executive session tonight prior to the board meeting at six thirty. Purpose of the executive session was safety and security. Agenda item three is public comment. There's two public comment sessions in each board meeting. The first is for public comment on any agenda item. The public comment at the end of the session is for any items. So this first one is just for items on the agenda. Is there any public comment in the audience? Any public comment online? Thank you, Jeff. Moves this to agenda item four, interviews with new board members. Dr. Finney, could you explain to the board the process we're going to use in interviewing our six candidates, please?
Yes, good evening. So the Pots Grove School Board will interview candidates for the open seat with a term ending November twenty twenty five. So that means the, the new board member will be seated tonight and will serve through November twenty twenty five, at which point the election will then decide the school board makeup. Candidates have completed a questionnaire and in the order that they submitted their little letter of interest and resume, they'll be interviewed here publicly. We have three questions and then the board may ask additional questions, after which time the board will deliberate and identify which is the successful candidate.
Thank you. So we'll begin with the first candidate, which is, you're going to?
Lindsay Stratton.
All right.
Hello, are you Lindsay Stratton?
I am. Hi, everyone.
Well, thank you so much for putting yourself forward for this.
Of course.
This is because of the Sunshine Act, this act has to be public. And that is, it's an act of bravery to put yourself forward for this. And we really do appreciate your willingness to do this and your willingness to serve.
Please.
Board members have your questionnaire. And if I'm just going to, there's three questions I'm going to ask and then we'll see if the board wants any additional questions.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. So we have your resume and letter of interest, but if you can please briefly share your involvement in the community.
So I'm new to the community. I moved here in January of twenty twenty three, so I am still very new to the area. I moved here from Philly with my husband. He is a firefighter for the city of Philly and my three kids. There is a nine-year-old Christian who is enrolled at Lower Pots Grove. And then I have two daughters who are not yet enrolled, but will be within the next two years. They're four and two. So.
Okay. And why do you want to be on the board?
I want to be on the board for a few different reasons. I have always been on the teacher end. I teach college education, English specifically. So I have a very different experience when it comes to, I guess, this. I've always been either the parent or the teacher, and I think this would give me a different perspective as to everything that goes in, that gets like involved before they reach my classroom. And I think that would help to give me a different perspective in my teachings.
What school district issues do you believe need the most attention? And why are you the best candidate to help address them?
I think one of the biggest issues currently is the rising of AI usage. How do we combat that? How do we go against, maybe not necessarily against, but how can we embrace the usage of AI in school and in technology? How can we use it to aid our students instead of looking at it as a way of cheating? Might not necessarily be a school board issue, but it's going to become a bigger issue as these students grow up.
So board members, that they were the three prepared questions. Does any board member have any additional questions you would like to ask?
Hi.
I have a question. So how would you?
I can hear you.
How would you handle sensitive issues such as religion in the classroom or efforts to ban certain books while balancing community concerns and making sure students have access to accurate, inclusive, and well-rounded learning?
Okay, I love your question. So one of my areas of expertise, I just finished up my doctorate for education, and one of the bigger areas was in inclusivity and how do we address these kinds of issues? Regarding banned books, my master's is in English, so I also love that. I think by allowing students to have some autonomy in choosing books, for example, if, let's say it's a tenth grade English class, regular level, not, not standard, not advanced, say we decide to do it as a book club. They have to read one book of their choosing. You present them five, you give them a summary, you don't tell them the name of the book, and you let them choose. If it's something that would be considered a banned book, I would send home a note to school and say, hey, this is a book we're really interested in, here's the topics. If this is something you don't want your student to read, here's our alternative list, which would you prefer? And see what the parent says back regarding either religious issues, banned books, anything of that nature. But I think that giving autonomy to the students helps to improve at least their productivity in the classroom.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
How do you feel is the role of an individual school board director?
I believe the role is to act as a team player. You're not one person, you're one unit. You're not acting solo. You are trying to liaise between each member's unique ability and what they bring to the table and how they're trying to serve the community better. So I don't think it's that everybody has a role that they need to fill. Yes, maybe, maybe treasurer, secretary, our, our individual roles. But I think it's something that everybody has to work towards together. We all have a goal in mind and that's how we have to do it. Whether it means I'm carrying sixty percent and you're carrying forty today, that's fine. But we all have the same goal in common. So it's not that we all have individual roles, we're all working towards one unique goal.
Do you?
I just have.
It's going to take my first is on.
Okay.
Mine's off now.
Thanks. Okay, I just wanted to ask, obviously it's been advertised that this is a seat that is vacated and the term runs through November. So if selected or even if not, I guess, would you attempt to campaign to seek reelection? Or are you just looking to? Or election, rather, yes, I guess.
Okay. Yes. Sorry, the microphone's a little, it's kind of fun. But yes, I would.
If there's no other questions, thank you for participating in this. What we're going to do now is we'll ask you to step out and we'll interview the next candidate. And then once we're through with the interviews, we'll bring you all back in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As the second person's coming in, last time we did this, it is important that we ask the same questions of each of the candidate for the three of you. So they were good questions, but then at least we get consistency in the interviews. So same questions.
Hello, thank you for putting yourself forward for this. Serving as a board member is a challenging role and interviewing for it publicly is even more challenging. So thank you for doing that. What's going to happen now, you filled out a questionnaire, the board members all have that. There are three prepared questions that I'll ask and then the board members may have additional questions as well. Okay?
Very good.
And am I saying your name correctly? Is it Lane Caddy?
That's correct.
All right. Well, again, thank you for coming in. My first question is, we have your resume and letter of interest. If you can please briefly share your involvement in the community.
I have a lot of things going on in life. I have such a beautiful family. We are nearby, I have three children in Pots Grove. Well, the youngest is ten months old, so she's not in Pots Grove District yet. And as far as the community, I'm involved with Connection Church and Coventry, active member there. And also my work is at Valley Forge Promotions. I'm the sales and marketing director for this parent company, which runs Arnold's Family Fund Center, the American Treasure Tournament Museum, and Oak Center Cinema. And in that role, I manage all of their social media, their advertisements. You know, we run TikTok, YouTube, Instagram, and Facebook pages for all of those companies as well as their website and do a lot of interfacing with the public there. I, oh, I have another piece of it. Almost forgot to tell you about Arnold's Camp Awesome is the summer camp that I developed over the last few years in my role there. Last summer was our first summer of Arnold's Camp Awesome. In our second summer this year, we already have eighty-five kids registered. I'm really excited about the program. It's for children entering kindergarten through entering eighth grade because I saw a need in the community there for not just childcare for working parents in the summer, but for an excellent experience for those kids to have a really fun time. So we're really looking forward to that.
Wonderful. So why do you want to be on the board?
That definitely circles back to my three children. They are all pretty young, they're twelve, ten, and infant baby. So I think that, you know, I don't ever want to be a parent that has like qualms with the way things are done and doesn't ever step up and say like, I'm, I'm going to help with that.
What school district issues do you believe need the most attention? And why are you the best candidate to help address them?
I think technology is my biggest concern for my children right now. Their screen time, there's just a wide range of thoughts about how children should be interacting with screen time. And we need to give them the tools to use the modern tools of commerce in the workplace. And it's really important that they learn that. But there are so many dangers out there. The, you know, the internet is a scary place. And I have some like really harrowing examples of, you know, ways that just inappropriate content comes out and finds your kids. They don't have to be out looking for it, it will come and find them. And so I'm really concerned with how to just protect them, but while they are educated in these really important tools that we all need for business.
Hello.
Hi.
So my question is, how would you handle sensitive issues such as religion in the classroom or efforts to ban certain books while balancing community concerns and making sure students have access to accurate, inclusive, and well-rounded learning?
That's a great question. That's a tough question. I really see myself as an excellent mediator. I am a middle child. And so I've had to kind of be that in-between for people in a lot of ways. And I, I feel like my stance is really moderate on a lot of things. So I think that I would be good at helping people find middle ground where that can be really challenging on polarizing issues. Yeah.
How do you feel is the role of an individual school board director?
I think that the role is to support the school and to help the school do its job optimally, which is so challenging, there are so many challenges. But yeah, I think that the role is to also bring the, the feeling of the community, the thoughts of the community to the board and, and while supporting the school, all the staff and, and members that are working really hard for our children. Thank you.
Hi. So as I'm sure you know, this is a process being done to fill a vacant seat with a term through November. So if selected or even if not selected, would you attempt to campaign to seek election for a longer-term seat?
Yes, I think I would.
Okay, well, that is all the questions that we have for you. So at this point, we'll, we'll ask you to excuse yourself and we'll continue our interviews and bring you back in when the board deliberates.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for putting yourself forward. Serving on the board is a challenging job and publicly interviewing is an additional challenge. So we do appreciate that. You're interviewing for a board position that starts today and goes through the November meeting, at which point the, from December on, will be decided by the election. We have your questionnaire that you filled out and then we have, there'll be six questions that we'll be asking you. If, rather than me jeopardize butchering, butchering your last name, if you could state your name, that would be great.
It's Jabawi.
Thank you so much. And if you're ready, I'll start with the questions. So the first question is, we have your resume and letter of interest. If you can please briefly share your involvement in the community.
Sure. I would say we moved here about seventeen years ago and it was just me and my husband at the time. And we, I am very passionate about community involvement. So I got involved with the township and started the neighborhood cleanup program and did, did that with the township for a while. And then when we eventually had kids, I got my kids involved in that as well. I'm also a big proponent of donating blood to the Red Cross. I do that on a regular basis. And I also am involved in, you know, walks that have to do with healthcare. I'm very passionate about health and ensuring that, you know, they get the funding and the support and awareness that they need.
Thank you. Why do you want to be on the board?
I have two children in the school. They're twins and just completed ninth grade. And I've been engaged with the PTA and other areas. Back before COVID, I was part of the nutrition program back at lower, lower, yes, at the time. And I think I'm at the point where my children are becoming independent and I can contribute more to the school and the district. And very passionate about our children and their future. And also supporting the staff through my children's time at Pots Grove, I've learned that the staff need a voice as well and they need to be heard. So trying to be an advocate for both sides and then also for the families. You know, my children are engaged in activities and I hear from other parents and their struggles that they have and ideas that they have. And I think I have an opportunity to contribute and give back to the district, just like I've tried to give them back to the community as a whole.
What school district issues do you believe need the most attention? And why are you the best candidate to help address them?
I think, to narrow it down, I would say number one is social media and cyber bullying and, and things like that. I think more attention needs to be brought to that and more skills need to be given to the children. More support and resources need to be given to the parents and to the staff to handle that. I think it's a dangerous direction the society is going in. And it's just, you know, AI is coming, Chat GPT. And if we don't stay ahead of it, ahead of the curve, I'm very concerned of where the future will be for our children. Another area is just general awareness with the evolving times, not only just with electronics and social media, but also with culture. There's so much changing, you know, with different cultures coming into our societies. Educating people on those differences and respecting those differences, I think, is very important. And then on other areas of changes in the society, I think it's important that we need to stay ahead of it, not only for our children, but for the staff and for the parents. Because, you know, the children will be facing these, but we as staff and parents need to be supporting them and being able to talk to them and being able to give them all perspectives, saying, okay, we understand this is different for you and this is how we're going to work through it.
Hi.
So my question is, how would you handle sensitive issues such as religion in the classroom or efforts to ban certain books while balancing community concerns and making sure students have access to accurate, inclusive, and well-rounded learning?
Yeah, so that kind of goes along with what I was just speaking to. I think there, there's a lot changing in our society that I'm not prepared for with my children and I need to educate myself on a regular basis on. There's information that our children need to be aware of. I don't think we should put blinders on them on what is happening in the world. They need to be aware of different perspectives, different cultures, different religions. And they may not agree on it, we may not agree on it, but we should be educated on it and let them make their own choices to a point. You know, I think, you know, there are, especially the younger ones, you know, they can't really fully understand all these differences. So how can we leverage them to respect them and let those voices be heard? But point them in a direction that will make them good citizens as well.
Thank you so much. Hi.
Hi.
What do you feel is the role of an individual school board director?
Well, to contribute, I don't, I see, I'm very much into collaboration. And I don't think much can be done successfully when you work as an individual. I'm very passionate about teamwork. And even in my professional career, I don't like to work solo in my department. I learn more from others across other departments. So as an individual person, I feel like I need to be representative, I need to be supportive of the team. I need to be bringing my thoughts and perspectives to a discussion. But a decision should not be made by one person. Collaboration is very important. So I would ensure that as a discussion is taking place, that we hear all perspectives and we make an educated decision, final choice, whatever the case may be, after hearing everybody's perspective.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
So as Dr. Finney had mentioned, this is a position, filling a vacant seat that will run with a term through November. So if selected or even if not, would you intend to campaign to seek election for a, for your seat?
I think so. As I had stated, my children are at a point where they are becoming more independent and I'm ready to be more involved. So I would, would like to be reelected. If it doesn't work out for me this time, I'm not, I have other ideas. You know, there's the PTA and there's also, my children are engaged in sports, so getting on, more engaged within the Booster Club as well. So regardless of the outcome, I, I intend to continue forward.
So that is all the questions the board has for you. Thank you so much. At this point, we're going to ask you to step out and we'll continue the interviews and bring you back in for the deliberation.
Okay, great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for putting yourself forward for this position. Serving on the school board is a difficult job and publicly interviewing is difficult as well. So we have, the board has your questionnaire that you filled out.
Great.
There'll be six questions that, that myself and board members will ask. I do want to be clear that this is, this position is for, this begins this evening. A candidate will be seated tonight and it runs through November. And then the election will decide who, whose seat it is in December.
Perfect.
If you could be so kind and just state your name.
Hello, everybody.
Can you hear me now? Fantastic. Hi, everybody, my name is Casey Finollio.
All right. Casey, if you're ready, I'll ask the first question.
Fire away.
We have your resume and letter of interest. Please briefly share your involvement in the community.
Sure. Well, if you have my resume, you know that my job is the community. I currently serve as the Director of Community Engagement at Pottsont Hospital as well as the Tower Health Systemwide Director of Grant Writing. And it is my job to ensure that the hospital is engaging in the community. I work every day to serve my neighbors, which is really special. My team develops a community health needs assessment every three years. It's a really big survey. We interview community members, community stakeholders. I think Dr. Finney has participated in the past. We hold focus groups and we really look at what are the problems that our neighbors are having, not just with their health, but the social determinants of health, transportation, food, housing, education, workforce development, right? So really big survey. We take that survey and then my team and I develop a three-year plan for how we're going to address the needs in the community. And that plan, it covers a whole bunch of activities from health education and prevention to working with and partnering with local school districts and community-based organizations. We have some really large projects. We have a one-acre farm in partnership with Green Allies that sits right here in our school district, actually. And that program works to serve about fifty low-income community members, bringing them about three thousand pounds of organic produce. We have a very active street medicine program that brings healthcare to individuals experiencing homelessness. We serve about six hundred local individuals experiencing homelessness in the community, from local families to single adults that live here as well. That's kind of the tip of the iceberg from the, the hospital perspective. We do a lot of, of programming out in the community. In addition, I also serve as the Board of, Chair of the Board of Directors for Tri-County Community Network, or TCN. TCN is a fantastic local nonprofit organization. You can think of it like a membership organization, similar to the Chamber of Commerce, but specifically for nonprofits. We have about a hundred and forty local nonprofit members. And we offer a range of services really focused on capacity building, fund development, HR trainings, financial trainings. We do a lot of strategic planning. And really our goal is to ensure that the nonprofit community is sustainable and resilient and sticks around so that the community members here that really need those services can continue to access them for a long time. In addition to that, I was a graduate of the 2024 Chamber of Commerce Leadership Tri-County Class. And so it was a year-long, ten-month leadership development program that I participated in and graduated from, which really prepares local leaders to continue to grow as leaders in the community, encourages board involvement, school board involvement, engaging in Board of Directors, et cetera. One of my most fun things that I've done is serve as a volunteer coach for the Pots Grove Future Falcons when I first moved to town about six years ago. My fourth grade class, shout out if any of their parents are listening, we had a lot of fun doing that. So my, my community engagement is very vast because it's the work that I do, but also an interest of mine and passion in serving the community.
Why do you want to be on the board?
That's a really good question and not the first time I've heard that. My husband and my family all asked me too. So thank you for that question. Um, so thank you for that question. You know, one of the things that I wrote in um my letter of interest, I hope you had a chance to read it, was when I was a senior graduating high school, um, I was voted um most school spirited. Which actually the award was most likely to bleed orange and black, which was our school colors. Um, and I am so proud of that. I graduated with a graduating class of about a thousand students from Pensbury High School in Bucks County. And so um given, being given that award by my peers was really a recognition to my dedication um to the school, to learning and to growth and to the extracurricular activities I participated in. Um, and I credit a lot of my success um in my life thus far to my public school education. My um tenacity, my resilience, my problem-solving skills, my ability to work as a team and work with others. Really, all of that was fostered in my K to twelve education. Um, and I think about the opportunities that I was given as a student, um, to participate and be engaged, um, to learn from my peers. Um, and to really find value in what I wanted in a career at such a young age. Um, I I want every student to feel like they have opportunities, but not just have opportunities, that there's not barriers in the way of them achieving those opportunities. Think working at the hospital, I shared that we do that needs assessment. So I I know a lot about the community's needs, um, probably more than any human needs to know. Um, but I think from understanding the needs of the community, I know that our students have barriers to achieving their hopes and dreams, right? Um, whether they're financial, um, not enough food on the table, they come to school hungry, there's not a roof over their head. Um, maybe it's um, you know, they've experienced trauma in their lives. And so from the community side of that, that's my job every day is to remove those barriers. I would really love to have an impact in the school setting and really making sure those barriers are removed and seeing how um I can best serve every single student in the district.
Okay. Uh, what school district issues do you believe need the most attention and why are you the best candidate to help address them?
Oh, great question. Um, I'm gonna give a twofold answer. Um, first, I'm gonna say um behavioral health. I was um listening in the call, um, the last board meeting call virtually. And at the end, there were two comments um from two parents in the district around um behavioral health needs in the school. As you can imagine, working in the healthcare setting, um, behavioral health, um, while I'm not a behavioral health practitioner, my job is to implement community-based um strategies. And one of the areas that we focus on is behavioral health. Um, and so from a need perspective, I really understand the need. Um, I look a lot at the P A Youth Survey, which really outlines um our students' needs in terms of um, you know, suicide, um, mental health concerns, um, substance use, et cetera. I also think you all have recognized that behavioral health is a need. I see later on the agenda that you'll be voting on a new position in partnership with the Lincoln Center. And one, I commend you for for even having that conversation and recognizing that need. Um, but I think there's some more work to be done and I think that um my ability to conduct research and really be um present in the public health field and understanding on some of those behavioral health um best practices would add some value to the district. The other area I'll talk about a little bit is workforce development. Um, I really value that the district wants to produce um contributors in society, right? Not just educate students, but really create um youth and then adults who are ready to contribute in the workforce. Um, I love when people grow up here and wanna stick around and stay local. Um, being, working at a local employer, um, I want students from here to come work at our hospital one day. Um, and so I do think um create, ensuring that students have opportunities to um engage through internships, workforce development opportunities um is something I'm really supportive of and think that I could contribute to in a meaningful way as well. Hi.
Um, my question is, how would you handle sensitive issues such as religion in the classroom? Or efforts to ban certain books while balancing community concerns and making sure students have access to accurate, inclusive, and well-rounded learning?
It's a good question. Um, I approach a lot of things and maybe this is something I learned in my leadership class or just as a manager, um, with listening. And so starting out by just listening to the community members' concerns, I feel like when you can give people the opportunity to be heard, um, they feel and and know that you value what they're saying, maybe even if you disagree. Um, and then coming at the um approach with keeping the students in mind, what is at the best interest of every student in the school district? Um, in making some of those really hard decisions, whether it's on religion or banned books, whatever it may be. Um, but really thinking about um students as a whole, not just one student or a handful of students, right? Um, you all work every day to support hundreds of students in our community. Um, and so I think um also approaching things from a fact-based perspective. I think there is a lot of data that exists on um certainly cons of um, you know, enacting certain um policies or even pros of enacting certain policies. And so looking at what other schools have done, learning from those experiences, um, and taking best practice into consideration would be how I would approach this scenario.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Hi, Casey. What do you feel is the role of an individual school director?
Uh, like a, like one of the board members, just to clarify, okay. Um, governance, right? And so um I um have served on a board, as I mentioned, I've been on the T C N board for almost six years now. I've been the chair for almost July first, will be um finishing my year. And what I've learned in that experience is really the role of the board. Um, I've never, and I have no interest in being on a working board, right? I um have interest in being on a governing board, which is how every school board should operate. Um, fiduciary responsibility, goals, strategic planning for the district. Um, interaction with the superintendent, um overseeing their specific role. Um, but really working to stay out of the weeds, showing up, being present at school activities, um, so that the staff know that you care. They know that you want to learn about what's going on, um, but really keeping to the governance of the organization as a whole. You're welcome. Hi, neighbor.
So um, as Dr. Finnerty mentioned, this is a temporary seat.
Yeah.
Through November, uh, so if selected or even if you are not selected.
Sure.
Uh, would you intend to pursue a seat via election?
That's a really good question and my answer um would be yes. Uh, this is um not something, to be quite honest, um, a year ago, if you asked me if this was where I was headed, I probably would have said, mm, no. Um, I have a lot going on. I have a a three, almost three-year-old daughter at home. Um, but I work really hard to balance my priorities. Um, and as I think about um my future and what I want, I would say in the past six months, this is really something that I've started to think about a little bit more. Um, when this very unique opportunity kind of popped up on my Facebook page, um, and my, um, you know, when I came to the website to log into the meeting, it was on the page. Um, it kind of got me thinking a little bit about, could I see myself participating in this role? Um, would I add value in this role um to all of you and the students here? Um, and um, do I have the capacity to do this? And I am at a point in my life where I can say yes to all of those things. I think I would add some really good value to the team. Um, and I think I have the time to be able to uh dedicate to being here and being present beyond school board meetings, but really better engaging with the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our questions.
Perfect.
At this point, we'll ask to step outside and uh and we'll bring it back in when the board deliberates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, Stacy. Thank you for uh putting yourself forward and uh for uh enduring the awkwardness of a public interview.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, as I, I'm sure you know, this is for uh the open position, starting this evening through November. And then the municipal uh municipal election will decide December uh forward, okay? Uh, we have your uh questionnaire and your application. Uh, there's gonna be six questions.
Okay.
Uh, so if if you're ready, I will get started.
I'm ready.
Okay, uh, so we have your resume and letter of interest, but if you please briefly share your involvement in the community.
Sure. So um I started, I went to Pots Grove, I graduated from Pots Grove. And then I decided I wanted to move uh to Louisiana. Why? I don't know. Um, but that's where I met my husband and then we came back up here and decided we wanted to stay in the Pots Grove School District. Um, being that I grew up here, you know, it's, it, I'm a firm believer and you you come back to where you grew up, your roots are here. So from that point on, since we moved back, I said, I'm gonna be involved in the community. Um, I've been P T A president for four years. I've been involved in the middle school P T A. Um, not so much high school, but I do have an incoming high schooler for the ninth grade. Um, in addition to that, I was involved in lower and then um currently gonna be president of the middle school this year. So we kind of jump around, but you know, in in all aspects of the Pots Grove School District, I feel that I do put myself out there to volunteer. And just to help the students and the teachers and the community and have a more community-based for the Pots Grove School District.
And why do you want to be on the board?
So I want to be on the board. I feel I'm a servant um to the community. I can help to serve the parents, the teachers, the community for the district. Um, my mission is to build the stronger schools and a stronger community presence in the buildings, you know, in the the board itself, in the district as a whole. I also want to ensure that all students have the best education in the most supportive environment, which I feel is happening now, but there's always room for change. So if I can facilitate that change, you know, with the board, I'm happy to do that, work as a team and advocate for the students, the parents and the teachers, as well as the community members who maybe don't have students currently in Pots Grove School District. But ultimately, you know, like Finnerty had mentioned earlier, we want to get more people involved, retirees, bring them in to see how awesome our students are and what they've been doing here.
What school district, school district issues do you believe need the most attention and why are you the best candidate to help address them?
So I'd say the first thing would be budgeting constraints, um, sitting through a lot of the policy committee meetings, especially the Operations Finance Committee. Knowing the budget challenges that we've had and knowing the challenges that the board has had with having to struggle to raise taxes, whether or not, you know, that goes into fruition. But it's definitely a challenge when you think about everything that the board has to do. But also with my background, um, I used to be in the restaurant industry. I'm also um a current owner of a thriving business with my husband and I. So I feel my background in all of that with financial management, budgeting, forecast, forecasting, and also understanding fund accounting, which is very interesting in itself. Um, I feel that best qualifies me for that position. Um, in addition to the budgeting constraints challenge, I also feel like the infrastructure changes that are gonna be coming up is also a challenge for the district. Going back to the budgeting as well, but also coming from a construction background, I grew up in construction. My dad was a painter, all of his friends were construction, so I do know how to read bids. I do know how to look at the construction side of things to help benefit the board in making a decision when it comes to that. The last thing I would say is a challenge would be just making sure that all of the students' needs are met. It is definitely a challenge. Um, and every day, I think that the the administration, the teachers, the staff all strive to do that. And some days you may meet all of their needs and other days you may not. So I would like to play more of a role in that decision-making process to make sure that all of the students' needs are being met.
My question for you is, how would you handle sensitive issues such as religion in the classroom? Or efforts to ban certain books while balancing community concerns and making sure students have access to accurate, inclusive, and well-rounded learning?
I would say that that's not something, that that's a decision that I would make myself. Um, I would say that that would be a board decision, um, with collaboration to the board. I can honestly, I can't sit here and say that I would ban this certain book, I would ban this certain book, because I don't think we're there yet as a district. Um, I feel that district-wide, we're pretty fair and we understand that, you know, history is history and we don't try to change history. Um, but like I said, I feel like it would be a board decision. And as far as um touching on the inclusivity of the district, I would say that every student needs to feel included. Whether they're gen ed, special ed, life skills, wherever they're at, they need to be included. Um, for example, a bit ringing, we raised more money than we anticipated in our one fundraiser. So I'm working with Amanda Sheehan to try and figure out a way for all of the students up there to be able to go to recess. Because right now, all of our, all of our equipment doesn't include them. It doesn't include them because if they're in a wheelchair or if they have uh that they can't walk or certain disabilities to them. So that's one of the things that we're working and then hoping, you know, to carry that across the district to be able to include all of the children.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Stacy. What do you feel is the role of an individual school board director?
The role of the individual school board director is to collaborate with the school board. It's also to listen to the concerns from the community. It's also to listen to the concerns from students, from parents, from teachers. And then take that constructive criticism back to the board and say, hey, look, you know, this is what some of the people are saying, like, how can we change this? How can we alleviate this? You know, are these concerns valid? So I would say as a whole, it's not just one school board member. I would say it's working as a team to ensure that one school board member has the support that they have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi.
Hi, Lewis.
So as Dr. Finnerty mentioned, as you know, uh, this is a bigoted seat that runs through November. If selected or not selected, and I know that you're, but because I know the answer to this question. I voted in the primary, I know the answer to this question, but uh, would you intend to seek a new term on board in the election?
Yes, considering I am on the um ballot for the election, for the general election, I made it through the primaries and I am on the ballot for November. I think that answers my question, your answer is your question, but I am vested. You know, um, my commitment to the board and I think my commitment to the, all of the committees and just coming here and showing everyone in the district that I am committed to be on the board puts me in a position where I feel like if I was selected tonight, there would be continuity from now until December, rather than getting on in December and having to relearn everything. I feel like now's a good time to get on the summer session, relearn, and then be ready for the fall.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much, the, all the questions. So at this time, we're going to uh ask you to step outside and we'll finish up the interviews and bring everyone back in for the deliberation.
Great. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, sir, and uh, welcome. Uh, thank you for putting your name forward. Uh, serving on on the board is a difficult, uh, difficult job and publicly interviewing for it is particularly difficult. So we really do appreciate you putting yourself forward and participating this evening. Um, we have your, well, the uh, this position will be seated tonight and it will serve through November. At which point, uh, after which point, the municipal election will decide uh who continues in that role. Um, we have uh your application and your questionnaire and we'll be asking six questions. Uh, so if you're ready to start, uh, I'm gonna first ask you to to just uh state your name.
Uh, James M. Boddington.
Boddington, okay. Uh, again, thank you, sir, for uh stepping forward. And if you're ready to start, I'll start with the first question.
Let's go.
Okay. Uh, we have your resume and letter of interest. Pl- please briefly share your involvement in the community.
Um, currently, I do a couple of volun- I volunteer coach for the Pots Grove Soccer League. Um, my first year being a head coach, which was pretty stressful, but um I'm finding myself liking it more and more. Um, I also am a part-time swim instructor at the Y M C A. Um, I've been doing that at the Y M C A for almost two years. Um, and then I- that at the YMCA for almost two years. And then I also work at a school in writing for emotional support.
And why do you want to be on the board?
I've been serving youth for 20-plus years. I've been working with them. Now I think it's time for me to start working for them. Helping them realize their potential and more than just, hey, you can do it, actually putting my foot forward and helping them realize their goals and helping the teachers help them. And I want to do more in my community and help out with that.
Okay. What school district issues do you believe need the most attention and why are you the best candidate to help address them?
Safety is my number one. I, the school that I work at, we have scanners and we have metal detectors and stuff like that, and we're always looking at ways to improve. And having security officers and other means to make sure that our students are safe is probably my number one.
Hi. So I have one question for you. How would you handle sensitive issues such as religion in the classroom or efforts to ban certain books while balancing community concerns and making sure students have access to accurate, inclusive, and well-rounded learning?
All right. Banning books has never been an issue for me. I am a man of faith, but I think that would be an individual, individual concept. I think that would be up for the families to decide if they want their kids to participate, then so be it. If not, then they can biggest use for that particular book. I don't think it's a complicated issue if you don't make it. And that's how I feel. What about that?
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hi James. What do you feel is the role of an individual school board director?
Coming in blindly, honestly, I honestly don't know. This is my first time putting myself out there like that. But in my opinion, being part of the school board is to come together as a team and find out what's best for our students, best for our teachers, and figuring out those issues. We're not going to always agree on something, but there's got to be some kind of common ground where you come up with something. It's a matter of being a leader and showing that we can lead our community in doing what's right for the future of our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
How are you?
Doing well, thanks. So, as Dr. Finnerty mentioned, this is a seat with a term that runs through November. So if selected or even if not selected, would you intend to seek a longer-term seat through election or?
I believe I would. I mean, like I said, as part of me putting myself out there is I want to be more involved. And if I don't get elected, I mean, I would have to take time to think, but I think I would definitely take the time to put more effort into my introduction letter and maybe a campaign or whatever, whatever it is you guys do, and definitely be more prepared.
Thank you.
Okay, that is all the questions the board has for you. At this point, we're going to ask you to have a seat in the room. We'll invite the other candidates in and the board will deliberate. Thank you.
All right, board. Let's call the meeting back to order again, please. As a way forward, I am suggesting that we begin with a stroll poll of the board and let the stroll poll drive any discussion that's necessary. And in the stroll poll, I'm asking each board member to name their top two candidates based on our review of the resumes, based on sitting through the interviews. To go around, collect that data just with the top two and then see what that poll looks like and see what discussion, if any, is necessary based on that poll. Okay with that? Anybody?
Works.
So what we need is someone to begin and just name of the six people who we read about and spoke with tonight, top two candidates.
Let's start.
Start with Tanya.
I really wanted a minute or two.
That's fine, Anique.
Number one Casey, number two Gwen.
I'm sorry, say that again, wait.
Are you putting, are we asking for it in order or just simply the two in any particular order?
Top two and we'll see what the votes are.
Without any particular order?
Yeah, without first or second. So I have Casey and Gwen.
Yes.
Patty?
I also have Casey and Gwen, one and two.
I think Lindsay.
And James.
Well, I'm sorry, Phil, can I say that?
Lindsay and James.
Lindsay and James. I have Gwen and Stacy.
That's you now.
I know, I'm still waiting on you. I have Stacy. Yeah, I'm sorry, I haven't had a chance to look any further. And, what was that? Lindsay.
Stacy and Casey.
Is that?
That's not the reason why, but.
Stacy and Casey.
Stacy and Casey.
I'm also Stacy and Casey.
Stacy and Casey. I'm sorry, Jim, who were you?
I'm Lee.
I know.
Based on that poll.
Okay, okay.
Oh, we have, oh, and Tanya.
I will go with Stacy and Casey as well.
All right, from that poll then, we have Stacy with five votes and Casey with five votes, followed third with Gwen with three. Are we comfortable at least saying it's between Stacy or Casey as the next step? Any objections to that?
Five and five, that's me.
So, do you want to do a second stroll poll of picking one or the other and see where we stand, or would you like some open discussion?
Me?
What's the next process? Do you want to go to another poll, pick one of the two? We go around with the eight?
I think at this point, I think we just go around and.
And do another, do another vote. Okay, so we are voting between Stacy and Casey, with each person having one vote.
Can I just ask a question? We do have eight, so what's the process in the matter we have? We hope we don't do that.
Say again with your answer?
You'll have to revote until you get.
Until we get five.
Yeah, right.
So between the two, which end are we starting with? Louis, are you ready to go?
I am not, yep.
Tanya, are you ready?
I don't really want to be the one to decide, but I'm not ready.
I'm ready if you want.
Jim.
Um, Casey.
Thank you.
I'll go.
Yes?
Stacy.
I'll go. Casey.
And that was Anique.
Casey.
That was Patty?
Yes.
Jay, Stacy?
Did you go?
Bill, Stacy.
What's it at?
Tonya's.
I don't know why you know.
Get with the one you want, no?
Yeah. Um, Casey.
All right, we've got four and four.
Say again?
We could say.
Any suggestions for a way forward? We have a tie of four, four.
Is anyone hemming and hawing one way or the other, maybe?
Say again.
Is anyone hemming and hawing, can't decide, or? See if there's anybody that's, does anybody want to change?
Would want to change their vote.
Swayable or whatever. So it's your turn again?
No.
Could we have an advocate for each of the two just talk to the board about why you see them as the strength? I'm suggesting that we ask for a volunteer to be an advocate for Casey, an advocate for Stacy, and just share with the board your thoughts and feelings as to why they would be the best of the six for a board member.
I can go for, sorry, I can go for Casey?
Thank you.
First of all, both amazing candidates. And I know that Stacy has been at all the committee meetings and has the opportunity beyond the board because she's already on the ballot. So she'll have more of a chance to experience this. Whereas Casey won't necessarily have that chance until right now. Now that aside, when she was interviewing, a lot of the key words and things that she was saying is stuff that we discuss regularly in our committee meetings, in board meetings, in the Ed Foundation meetings, in all of those. I liked how her job, her community job, is not only her job, but her passion, that she now emphasized that she has more time now to dedicate to it, that she took the time to really think about, can I add value? Do I have capacity and the time to be in this role? And again, having this amount of time, as short as it is, might give her that experience to then later on run when there's another opening later. I appreciate the information she gave about the behavioral health, how she talked about the pay survey, which is something we even just recently talked about. She talked about workforce development, something no one else talked about, which is also something that we've been working on in some of our committee meetings. And she hasn't even been there, she's already kind of talking about these things that we're already discussing. I like how she talked about being dedicated to education. Of course, all the candidates are dedicated to that. Working with, she's worked with the students in sports as well as her own children. I like some of the wording that she said about removing barriers for students, talking about all students, talking about leadership, working with all types of community members from, again, from the health perspective, to the mental health, to sports, to homelessness, to all of that, I think makes her a well-rounded person. Again, for this short amount of time, to give it a try, almost see if this is something she could really sink her teeth into and really dedicate herself to, again, when there's another opening later. So that's why I think I'd like to give Casey a try.
Thank you, Anique. Is there an advocate for Stacy who would like to speak?
I'll go. First off, I want to thank you all. This is not easy to do. Thankfully, I never had to do this. I just had to go door to door and beg people for my, for a vote. But, so I just want to thank all of you for coming out. And I hope that when there's, you know, in two years, another election, that I see some of those names on there. So anyway, I'm going to talk about Stacy because I, I don't know you very well, Stacy, but I do, my daughter knows you well and knows your son. So Stacy's son takes karate at the karate gym where my daughter has been for 20 years. She's 24, she started when she was four. She started teaching when she was 12. So, do the math, she's been teaching for 12 years. As you all can imagine, with the amount of students that come through a place like that, some, you know, some students are only there for a couple months, some are there for a couple years, some stick with it for a long time. She has some stories about parents, as you can all imagine. And her story, when I mentioned to her that I had seen one of, a Pots Grove student in the foyer wearing a legacy karate sweatshirt or t-shirt or something, and I explained that, you know, his mom was there and everything, and she was like, oh, I know Stacy. And she said, she's great. She really is. And she said her kids are amazing. Said she, she's just one of those parents that we enjoy seeing. And that, to me, is a huge testament because I don't hear that often from her. Usually I hear the horror stories. But also, in addition to that, I know Stacy has been very involved. She's been coming to committee meetings, board meetings, and the fact that she's already on the ballot, I think her starting, you know, a few months early will just give her that head start because we all know what it's like when we first start. You know, the first couple months, even sometimes the first year, you really don't know what you're doing. So I just think it would, it kind of all makes sense. And like I said, when my daughter said that and then I heard that Stacy was running, I thought it was just a really good fit.
Thank you, Ashley. Is there any other board member that would like to make any statement about either Stacy or Casey? Patty?
Like Ashley said, to piggyback on that, thank you for coming out. I mean, that's really courage. It really is. And I hope, like she said, the next election, you come back out. Don't give up, keep involved. But for me, what Casey brings to the table for me is the behavior issues, engagement with the community. She's been on board, so she already knows the protocol, you know, not to necessarily get involved individually. There's chain of commands. It just, overall, the whole package with Casey, I just, I just adored you. And Stacy also, but I'm going to go with Casey.
Thank you, Patty. Any other comments? Let me try a third poll, but in a different way. Each board member gets two votes. You can either split your vote, meaning you would accept either of the two candidates, or you can give both votes to one of the two candidates. So we'll have a total of 16 votes here. It could end up the same way, but may end up differently. So before we go around and think about it, I'd like you to just pause for the question. Are you willing to split your vote? Or is your, your feeling right now, your strength, strong that you want to give both votes to the same candidate? Does that make sense?
Yep.
And see if that, and then it, we may end up with a very close call here, but I'm asking for your agreement that if we have a difference of these 16 votes, that we go with a candidate that gets the most of those 16. Brian, you were going to say something?
If you do the split vote process, I would request that the final selection be confirmed with a vote for a single candidate because the school code requires that the vacancy be filled by a majority vote of the board. So I would want one candidate to have a majority vote.
Helpful.
So you can do your scoring the way you proposed, but I would want it to be ratified by a vote for the candidate.
Thank you. So this first vote is to see where we stand. With each person having two votes, based on the results of that, we either continue discussion or we do a second vote to confirm the person has the most of those 16 votes. Thank you, Brian. All right, so we go again. Anyone like to start? Yes?
I'm going to split my vote. It was very close to me, you know, I, Stacy by a small margin is why I chose Stacy, but it's close enough that.
Okay, so one Casey, one Stacy. Thank you.
I'm so thankful.
I'll go. I will, Jay, can you turn off your mic?
Sorry.
It's okay. I will not be splitting my vote. So both of my votes will go to Stacy.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not going to split my vote either. I'm going to... Both votes go to Stacy.
Thank you.
Bill, you said Stacy, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. Okay, that puts us at 2, 4, 6, 8, 9 for Stacy and 7 for Casey.
So we have 9 Stacy, 7 Casey. We now...
I would ask for a vote...
A motion to appoint Stacy Herbert as... to fill the vacancy on the board.
I'll make the motion that we approve Stacy Herbert.
A bear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have a motion?
To fulfill the position.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Stacy, welcome. To the other candidates who are here, thank you for your interest. Keep your interest going. You don't know where it takes you. I appreciate your being here. It is not because we were required to do this publicly. It just makes it a different kind of discussion. I hope you leave here feeling that we did it as fairly as we could with an open discussion. And again, thank you for your interest. Ms. Lewis?
I want to thank everyone for coming out. Echo what Jay said. And I know this is a really difficult process, and I think everyone did very, very well. I just want to share my own personal experience. I got on this board through a similar process. The first time I did it, I actually went for the seat that went to Tanya Taylor over there. And I came back. I started getting involved, much like Stacy did, because the second time, it was myself and Stacy here interviewing. So don't take this as a, you know, a negative thing or a setback. Use it as a springboard. Get involved. I think all of you were exceptional candidates. All of you have something to offer to the community, to the school district, to the board. So I would take this momentum, take this opportunity, and keep on going with it. I would love to see all of you back here at some point because I think that, you know, all of you are certainly capable of serving on this board. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lewis. Any other comments from the board before we swear Stacy in?
Yes. I landed on the board through this process. They didn't actually tell me that it was a public meeting when I got interviewed. I probably should have picked up on it. And then I ran. This is by far the more difficult way to get on the board. Just even when you don't know it's public. So I commend all of you for, you know, coming out, answering the questionnaires, the whole nine yards. And next time, take the easy way out and just run.
Thank you. Stacy will come around front, and we need to swear you in and get you to sign the affidavit.
That was a tense moment. I never want to relive that feeling. Thank you. Can I just say, it's incredible to see the amount of talent and passion in the community. Going through your letters and your resumes just made me feel so good about our community. I also got on the board like this. It is a very intimidating feeling. And you're going to go home and you're going to watch it, maybe, if you're brave. Don't do it. Don't do it. But I mean, I say stay involved. I know a lot of you are going to stay involved anyway because that's just what you do. And that's the heart of service you have. So I look forward to working with you guys, whether it's in the board or whether it's out in the community. So I wanted to thank you all for coming out today, truly.
Yeah, I want to apologize, but the oath office, outside of a reorg meeting, at a reorg... At the organization meeting, the annual organization meeting, the board presidents authorized to administer the oath. But outside of that, the oath is to be administered by a notary public. We don't have a notary public here. So I would suggest that you take your seat, but you won't be eligible to vote. We could have you come back and take the oath before a notary public tomorrow. And then officially, then you would be officially a member of the board. I apologize for that.
Do you have a notary public in the audience?
We did the last time.
Shady, yes.
Tell us we know.
Thank you.
Did you look this way for a picture? Sorry.
I have no idea.
It's not on this building. But it's not this room.
But it's listed as a rooftop. There's no rooftop, you know, up there, Phoebus area. Whatever I'm controlling is kind of working. But don't worry, it'll be a conversation with my guys and say, "Why would you let graphics show this?"
We'll call the meeting to order in two minutes. Two minutes and we'll call it to order. We'll start in 30 seconds. 30 seconds, please.
Board members, we are hearing reports from online that we're not... That they're not hearing us talk. So make sure that you're solid red. So that's the button on the right.
All right, let's call the meeting to order again. We're waiting for Patty to return, but we will begin the meeting. And then she will come in when she does. We are on Agenda Item Number 6, Report of the Superintendent.
Good evening. We have... There's three things I'd like to share this evening. First is our pre-K counts graduation. On Friday, June 6th, we celebrated the graduation of our first class of pre-K count students. There are a host of people who contributed in large and small ways to make this happen. I would like to thank our administrative team, especially Dr. Emery Lucas, for developing the relationship with the YWCA and to Terry Kohler for her steadfast leadership in getting the program off the ground. Congratulations to our pre-K count staff, our lead teacher, Shannon Weand, and her staff, Megan Stone and Phyllis Bauer, on their first graduates. It's the class of 2038, if my math is correct. I want to thank the board for your support and thank you to the YWCA for their partnership. We are making preparations to move our pre-K counts to Lower Pots Grove Elementary for the start of the 25-26 school year. My second item is, at the last board meeting, we... The board acted to appreciate the Lower Pots Grove Township volunteer firefighters. And we did receive a letter from Lower Pots Grove Township that I'd like to share with the board and read into our record. So, "Dear Mr. Finerty, on behalf of Lower Pots Grove Township, Board of Commissioners, I'd like to extend our sincere gratitude for support and leadership in passing the recent tax rebate legislation for volunteer firefighters. This meaningful action is more than a financial benefit. It is a powerful acknowledgement of the dedication, sacrifice, and service that our volunteer firefighters provide to their communities every day. In a time when recruitment and retention remain ongoing challenges, this measure sends a strong message that their selfless contributions are valued and recognized. Your commitment to the well-being of both our first responders and the safety of our public does not go unnoticed. We deeply appreciate your efforts to champion policies that support the individuals who risk their lives to protect others without expecting anything in return. Thank you again for your advocacy and for standing with those who serve." With gratitude, Ed Wagner, our township manager. So thank you for that acknowledgement. And last but not least, as it is our duty this time of year, we are naming a new student school board representative. We had four outstanding 10th grade students interview with a subcommittee of board members to fill the opening for our student board representative. All four students were truly outstanding. I want to congratulate Jordan Longacre for her selection as school board representative, and she will be joining us in the fall. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Finerty. Moves us to Agenda Item 7, Approval of Minutes, 7.1, Approval of the Board Action Minutes for the May 13, 2025 meeting.
Not used to this beeping. I'd like to make a motion. We approve 7.1 and 7.2 together.
Motion and a second to approve 7.1, approval of the monthly board action minutes of May 13, and 7.2, monthly board action minutes of May 27. Any discussion or questions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda Item 8, Payment of Invoices for May 2025.
I'd like to make a motion. We ratify the payment of invoices for May 2025 in the amount of $2,450,943.85, as presented.
Motion and a second to approve the payment of invoices for May 2025. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item 9, Personnel, Administrative Staff Appointment, New Principal for Ringing Rocks Elementary, Stephanie Myers.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve 9.1 and welcome Stephanie Myers.
Motion and a second to approve Stephanie Myers as the principal of Ringing Rocks Elementary School with a start date of July 14. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Dr. Finerty, would you like to introduce Stephanie to the board and people listening?
Yes, I'd like to point out that Ms. Myers is in attendance. Stand up and wave to everybody. And officially, welcome to the family.
Thank you. I just want to say, thank you very much for everything. I'm excited for this journey.
Welcome. It's nice to have you on board. 9.2, Professional Staff Appointment, Rachel Sabanouski.
I'd like to make a motion to combine and approve 9.2 through 9.6.
Motion and a second to approve 9.2 through 9.6, appointment of a music band teacher, music teacher at the middle school, an eighth-grade science teacher moving to the high school, and a middle school change to eighth-grade science teacher. And lastly, a learning support teacher for the middle school. Any discussion on any of those items?
Was 9.6 in there as well?
9.6 is approving the extended... It's a rescind of the extended school year. Sorry, I didn't cover that. So 9... 9.2 through 9.6. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motions pass. The motions pass. Moves us to 9.7, Act 93, Professional Staff Job Descriptions. There are six job descriptions here: Curriculum and Data Specialist, the Human Resources Secretary, and District Office Receptionist, the Human Resources Specialist, Operations and Purchasing Secretary, Elementary Dean of Students, and Teacher on Special Assignment. So, we're looking for approval of those six job descriptions.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 9.7.
Motion in a second to approve 9.7, the job descriptions for these six groups of professional staff. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 9.8, Change in Assignment, from an assistant to the Assistant Principal to Administrative Assistant to the Building Principal at the middle school.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve and combine 9.8 through 9.11.
Motion in a second to approve 9.8 through 9.11, Support Chaffs, Staff Change in Assignment, a resignation and termination of two folks, a athletic appointment of one individual, and the summer work positions for three individuals. And Patty, you said through 9.11?
Yes.
Any discussion on any of those items? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 9.12, The Summer Success Program.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 9.12.
Motion in a second to approve 9.12, Summer Success Program. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. 9.13 is the Summer Apex Credit Recovery Staff Appointments for One Individual.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 9.13 through 9.15.
Motion in a second to approve 9.13 through 9.15. This is the Summer Apex Credit Recovery Staff Appointment, the Employee Compensation and Benefits Plan, now called the Keystone Plan, and the Summer Hiring Authority while the board is not in session. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's pass. And a shout-out, Amy, to you and your folks. Consolidation of those groups into the Keystone, I think is a nice move with that consolidations and helps to simplify and yet still give recognition to the individuals as deserved. So, thank you for the work you put into that consolidation.
We no longer have a miscellaneous group.
That's right. So, I no longer feel that I'm part of the miscellaneous group. Hi, I'm in the miscellaneous. Agenda Item 10, Action Items, Business. First item is the approval of the 2.6 increase in property taxes, approval of the 25-26 school budget, general fund budget.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 10.1, the 2025-26 general fund budget.
Motion in a second to approve 10.1. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Wait, wait, you got somebody over here.
Oh.
Turn off your mic.
Sorry.
I just had a question or a clarification. So, this is, we are voting to approve the budget as was presented to us at the last meeting, correct? There are no changes that were made since then?
That is correct. There's no changes at this point.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? So, we have a motion in a second to approve the 25-26 general fund budget. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Now that we've approved the budget, we need to approve the real estate tax levy so that we can raise the money for the budget. So, 10, yes?
I just had a comment back on the budget.
Yep. Sorry, Patty.
I'd just like to thank Ron for all his hard work. I know he just came back to us, and I know how he works so hard, the nights you put in. I love having you back and thank you. We got the budget passed.
Yeah, thank you, Patty. We, the board had requested a range between 2.5 and 3. The administration here came in at 2.6. We commend you for that. This is in a time when you're going to see other districts around us pushing a bit above this, and it's something we will continue to discuss, to provide the best we can for Potts Grove Elementary students, and yet doing that in a way that is feasible economically. We've passed the budget. We now need to pass the real estate tax levy to give us the ability to raise the money to pay for the things in the budget. So, 10.2 is approval of the real estate tax levy.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 10.2, the 2025-26 real estate levy.
Motion in a second to approve 10.2, the real estate levy. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. 10.3 is approval of the Act 511 Taxes and Per-Capital Tax. This is the Earned Income Tax, the Per-Capita Tax, the Real Estate Transfer Tax, the Mercantile Tax, those four taxes.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 10.3.
Motion in a second to approve 10.3, the Act 511 Taxes and Per-Capital Tax. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 10.4 is the adoption of the resolution establishing the Homestead-Farmstead exclusion for 2025-26.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 10.4.
Motion in a second to approve 10.4, the Homestead-Farmstead exclusion. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. 10.5 is the Act 44 Safe Schools Report, which was presented to us in executive session.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 10.5.
Motion in a second to approve 10.5, the Safe Schools Report. Any discussion?
I would just like to thank everybody who's dedicated and brought that all together. So, good work.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. 10.6 is Year-end Budget Transfers. This authorizes administration to make the transfers and present them for approval to us at completion of the audit.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 10.6 through 10.8.
Motion in a second to approve 10.6, Year-end Budget Transfers, 10.7 are depositories, and 10.8, the appointment of the tax collectors for the 25-26 school year. Any discussion on any of those three items? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Motion's pass. 10.9 is rejecting the bid that we received for the tennis court project.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 10.9.
Motion in a second for 10.9, Rejecting the Bid for the Tennis Court Project. Those in favor?
Have a question.
Yes.
Since we're, you're asking us to approve the rejection, which sounds a bit weird, but will they be allowed to rebid this? Or do we have to go on to somebody else?
If I may, we're rejecting the bid based upon the recommendation of the design professional retained by the district for this project. The project would have to be rebid, and at this point, the low bidder has not been disqualified, so they would be eligible to participate in a rebid.
Okay, thank you.
Does this mean that our tennis program is going to have to go someplace else because of the, they starting to fall? Or they won't be starting here?
So, what, this means that it's going to be a delay in refinishing and refurbishing the tennis courts. It would be our intention, working with our partners, to move forward with potentially a spring bid, so that we would lose, we'd lose the falls, we'd have the fall season, we would lose the spring season, and have it ready for next fall, potentially.
So, we're now voting on rejecting the bid for the tennis courts. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 10.10 is approving a bid proposal by Saxon Sons for paving at Lower Elementary and the middle school at a cost of $597,000. That's 597, 705, and 84 cents.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 10.10.
Motion in a second to approve 10.10, our paving project. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Item 10.11 is approval or acceptance of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Bid Award for the purchase of art supplies, general supplies, paper, and medical supplies.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 10.11.
Motion in a second to approve 10.11, the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Bid Award. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Item 10.2, St. Aloysius has, 10.12, I skipped the one. St. Aloysius has offered to donate at no cost a used and well-kept baby grand piano to us to keep at the high school. If you remember, there was an item in the budget to purchase a piano for the music department, and here we have found one, a way of getting one that is in good condition at no cost to the district.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, we approve 10.12.
Motion in a second to approve 10.12, the donation of the baby grand piano.
So, if I may, I want to be clear that this, this is, would be in addition to the piano that we're budgeting. This is, this is a used piano that we would keep on the stage, and it would allow us to not have to move the brand-new piano back and forth, which is not a good plan. Okay?
Any other discussion?
Well, I would just like to thank St. Aloys for their donation, and it's going to find a great home. We'll take good care of it. Thank you.
So, we have a motion in a second to approve the donation of the baby grand piano. Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. 10.13 is the purchase of janitorial managerial software.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 10.13.
Motion in a second to approve 10.13, purchase of janitorial management software. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda Item 11, Action Items, Education, 11.1 is approval to contract with the Lincoln Center for a Drug and Alcohol Counselor at the Potts Grove High School, which will be a new position for the next school year.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve all action items under education. That would be 11.1 through 11.6.
Motion in a second to approve 11.1 through 11.6, the Drug and Alcohol Counselor, the Extended School Year Contract with New Story, the Extended School Year Contract with the School for the Deaf, the Extended School Year Contract with Vanguard, the 25-26 Contract with Cottage 7, and conference attendance at the German-American Teacher Exchange Program. Any discussion or questions on any of those items? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Item 12 is Report on the Western Center Joint Operating Committee. The Joint Operating Committee, or JOC, met on June 2 at 7:00 p.m. There were three presentations, a student survey result, a staff survey result, and an administrative director goals. I sent to each of the board members full copies of each of those presentations so that you have them to see, or if you have any questions. With the student survey, there were 15 statements using a six-point rating scale from strongly agree to strongly disagree, and the scores with, people who scored strongly agree or disagree on the 15 statements ranged from a high of 93.8% to a low of 69.7%. I listed here the two highest scores and the two lowest scores in the student survey. The two highest, where I am getting a high-quality education at the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center, 93.8% said either strongly agree or agree, and the second highest was I feel safe at this school with 92.7%. The two lowest scores, lowest in strongly agree and agree, the first was I feel comfortable speaking up about school issues with staff at the Western Center, 69.7% said agree or strongly agree, and the second lowest of the agree, strongly agree scores was students respect one another at 70%. The staff survey results, and again, you have the full copy of the staff survey results. There were 14 statements here. There was a seven-point rating scale. They added a not-applicable point here. The strongly agree and agree scores ranged from a high of 90.6 to a low of 25%. Two highest scores, strongly agree and agree, the first was teachers at this school feel that it's part of their job to prepare students to succeed with 90.6, and the second highest with this school emphasizes showing respect for all students' cultural beliefs and practices at 88%. Two lowest scores, agree and strongly agree, first was at this school, students are given the opportunity to take part in decision-making, 25% agreeing, and the second lowest was administrators involve staff in decision-making at 31.3%. The third of the three presentations was on goals for the 25-26 school year. The administrative director recommended two goals, establishing a capital reserve fund and a plan, planning and developing for an adult educational program. The JOC, members of the JOC, recommended a third goal, which is the continuation to getting more students there, in terms of that, and while that's not there yet, it was put up as a motion, and I think they're working to include that. The administrative director, David Levin Good, and the principal reported that the pre-apprenticeship program has been approved, the electrical program, and they also had a new student orientation on Wednesday, May 28. The Policy Committee of the JOC presented the second reading of the field trips policy and the first reading of six additional policies. In personnel items, the JOC approved the resignation of the automotive technology instructor effective July 31, Mr. William Solu. Hiring of the Western Center Assistant Principal, Mrs. Kelly Calhoun, effective July 1. The appointment of a new Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center Superintendent of Record, Dr. David Finerty, to fulfill the unexpired term of Mr. Robert Rizzo, starting August 2 until January 2026. So, congratulations to you, sir. And support staff salaries for 25-26 school year were also approved. In other action items, we approved a landscaping contract from Charleston Landscaping, a local advisory committee membership list, and Perkins membership list, a quote for new cafeteria tables, an agreement with CCAP Philadelphia, a quote for new flooring in the cafeteria, culinary side, the culinary hallway in the cafeteria, as well as painting for those areas. The next JOC meeting is Monday, August 4 at 7:00 p.m. by Zoom. What I didn't add to this report is, since I did this report, there is a new meeting that was added for June 16, for the, which is a Zoom meeting to finalize the salary and plans for the administrative director, as well as the Act 93 participants at the JOC. Any questions on this report or comments, or Patty, anything?
I would just like to shout out to all of our students who graduated and got their certificates. I don't have the number in front of me, but there was a lot of scholarships. I know we had two culinary students. One got a ride for $74,000, and one got a full ride for $145,000. Yeah, so, one was Johnson and Wales, and CIA, I believe, was the other one. But it was just so nice. Springfield hosted it, and it was just so nice seeing the kids with their little ropes, you know, so kudos to all our kiddos out there, or graduates.
Thank you, Patty. While we're on this topic, Chuck Nippert, Dr. Nippert, was a member of the JOC. He was our third representative we have there. That seat has been open. We have been waiting for the board seat to be filled. The easy answer here is just giving Stephanie all of Chuck's responsibilities. I'd rather not do...
Stacy.
Stacy. What did I say?
Stephanie.
That's Stephanie.
Yes, and this is our senior vice principal.
To give that to Stacy. I'd, I'd rather not do that, it's too easy. I, I will send an email to each board member. We want to keep a maximum of four people in each committee, so I'll just send you an email reminding who the four people are in committees, where it's open. Stacy has let us know through her email where her interests are, or through the questionnaire. I'll share that with you, and then I'll just ask you to get back to me and say, hey, I'd like to move from here to here, or from there to there. Makes sense? And we'll see where it goes. But, but again, the decision we need to make is no more than four people on any one, any one of those committees.
We have one vacancy.
What's that?
We have one vacancy at the JOC.
Yes. Well, and we have the two committees that Chuck was on. All right, so that moves us to agenda item 13, committee items 13-1, the Operations Finance Committee meeting minutes, its approval of the minutes of the May 13 meeting.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 13.1.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes of the May 13 Operations Finance Committee meeting. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. 13.2 is a report of the May 27 Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee.
Good evening. First, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the board, given that this is the last board meeting of this school year. I see how hard each of you work. I work throughout the course of the year quite closely with many of you, some of you very, very closely, so I appreciate the time and the effort and the partnership. So thank you for that. The Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee met on May 27 from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock. We were quite proud of ourselves because we accomplished a very robust agenda in less than an hour's time. Dr. Anne Marie Lucas, Mr. Tom Frevert, and Dr. Felicia Gonzalez provided an update on our alternative education programming, both at the middle school and at the, at the high school. At the high school, it's called our Evening Academy. At the middle school, it's called Grove Academy. Grove Academy runs during the school day. Obviously, the Evening Academy runs in the evening. Both of these programs provide alternative settings, supports, and services for our students, and both of them have really well-established entry and exit criteria. Both programs also monitor student progress and growth. Throughout the course of next year, the administration is looking at investigating a model that would allow the Evening Academy to potentially transition to a, during-the-day academy for the 2627 school year. Of course, there's some variables that go into that, considering space options, staffing options, all of those things. One of the big goals is to increase the number of students who return to their full-time programming back within our, that the educational setting here at the high school and at the middle school, but also highlighted both academic and behavioral growth that the students achieved while they were in those programs. A second topic that we discussed, and it's one of our continuing favorite topics, is personal finance, personal finance decision-making, actually. You will recall that by the 2026, 2027 school year, we are required to have in place a half-credit personal finance course. At previous meetings, our committee decided that we would call the, the course Personal Finance, and it would be at the value of a half a credit. We also decided that we would maintain the current attainment graduation requirement of 23.49 credits, as it's already established here in Potts Grove, and that would become effective for our next year's eighth graders. I was saying seventh graders before, but they're, they're moving on up. So that's the graduating year of 2030. Throughout that conversation, we had some additional decisions to make, because if we're inserting half a credit somewhere and we're not growing that credit attainment amount for graduation, we had to discuss where that was going to fall and how those decisions will be made. Dr. Gonzalez and I did meet with some parties at the high school in order to get some additional information, and that allowed the committee to make some additional decisions. That, some of those decisions are taking that half credit currently from the six-credit elective count that we have within our options, and we also decided that it would become a requirement in grade 11, and that's going to help us with really monitoring student attainment of this, appropriately scheduling, and making sure that we can staff the position as well. This will be a continued conversation throughout our committee meetings next year, because we'll have some additional work to do, but a lot of the decisions have been made, so thank you to the committee for that. A third area was potential class size reduction. You actually approved some new positions to any, or at least job descriptions of those positions, and that ties into the, this discussion item. We've seen two trends here in Potts Grove as it involves enrollment. One of those is we've had declining enrollment. At the same time, we have increasing student need, so they're kind of in battle with one another, so to speak. So, over time, looking at the data and following the data as we tend to do with our enrollment information, we've responded by either taking away some classes or adding some classes. So given that we see enrollment declining and student need increasing, we made some additional recommendations that the committee had some discussion about. The first of those is reduce the current number of fifth-grade classrooms from 10 to nine, and I did share some information in terms of what average class size would look like if we were to do that. The second recommendation was reduce the number of kindergarten sections from seven down to six at Ringing Rocks in particular. Going back two years, we had six sections there, and last year we added a seventh back in. Although we're reducing those two, we also recommended creating a dean of position, excuse me, a dean of students position at Lower Potts Grove Middle School that will very much mirror the responsibilities that our dean of students have, both at the high school and at the middle school, a little more elementary focus, though, however. We also have recommended creating a coordinator of student supports at Ringing Rocks Elementary School. That position will be assisting the principal with behaviors, tier one, tier two, and three behavior supports, looking at some discipline issues, maintaining student attendance, and a bunch of things along those lines. All of those positions have been posted at this point. I shared an update on curriculum renewal schedule, what that looks like. Throughout our budget conversations this year, we made, we pulled back on our curriculum renewal for world language, as well as for science. So just to keep the committee informed, I provided an update on what that would mean and what our schedule of different content areas will look like into the coming years, and how that licensing that we already have purchased through the district, or particular resources that we're using, one that will expire, and how that plays into it as well. Science and world language will be on the docket next year, so we'll go through science curriculum renewal so that by next spring, we're making recommendations to the CIT Committee, and then ultimately the full board. Finally, we also talked about, and we heard this a couple, several, well, I guess several hours ago now, but when we were having board interviews, you heard AI come into conversation in terms of artificial intelligence. We too have been having those conversations. In fact, our policy committee enacted a policy back in, early ago this year, and as we stepped into that, we realized very quickly that we needed administrative regulations to go along with that. We also realized very quickly that we needed a larger group of people sitting around the table. So we created a task force, which was representative of all the buildings, different grade levels, different content areas, specialists on core special education, really with the idea of how do we look at this to think about, what, how does this involve students? How does it impact our teachers? And how can we use it to our benefit? We looked at the implications of the policy and specifically determined that we needed the following areas to be defined more closely with our administrative regulations. That included five different areas, curriculum, academic ethics and honesty, overarching professional use, instruction, and a vetting and evaluation process. We have additional work to do with that committee to finalize, finalize those administrative regs, and that will either come back to the CIT or back to policy. Mr. Lapp, did I miss anything? Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Agenda item 13.3 is a report of the May 27 Policy Committee meeting.
All right, good evening, everyone. I echo what Daniel shared. It's been great this year, and we did talk in the policy meeting on May 27. We did 24 policies this year, so that's something to applaud, and that's all the work of, of this board, so thank you for that. So that evening, we had some old business. We were talking about the good old field trip policy again, policy 121. The focus on the field trip policy during the meeting was language around national trips that, that students win, and the ways in which we finance that. So we all agreed to the language. It moved to 30-day review. Then we had some new business. New business was policy 113.1, discipline of students with disabilities, and policy 113.2, behavior support. Language changes, very minimal to terminology that is in alignment with the law right now, because there were some updates there. And then we also had policy 317, 417, and 517. They're all the same policy, conduct, discipline procedures, but they are separate because one's for administrators, professionals, and classified staff. And again, this was language updates that PSBA had recommended that's in alignment with school code. The policy committee agreed to move all of those to 30-day review, and we also had a conversation about the way in which we categorize the policies, and that conversation will continue into the fall, just making sure that there's alignment with PSBA to help us to make sure everything flows well. So those conversations will continue into August, and I believe I caught all of the policies. Okay? Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Moves us to agenda item 15, public comment, and now, Tanya, you get to go fir-, say again? Oh, I meant, yeah, 14, 14.1, new business. I was gonna say, Tanya, you get to go first now.
Reading my report for the Legislative Committee. We had a Legislative Committee meeting on the 4th over Zoom, so I will try to, since it's 9:07, breeze through this as fast as possible. Thankfully, it wasn't a long meeting. We did have visitor Senator Maria Collette from Pennsylvania 12th District and her Chief of Staff on for the first half of the call. As you know, budget negotiations are ongoing, so there are no official commitments, so nothing really to report concrete on that front. She's hoping around September. I know, it's really fun for school boards, so she's hoping, she's saying possibly in September we'll get more going. Did confirm, the big thing we did discuss, though, was however HB 1500, which was the cyber charter bill reform, that was a big topic of discussion. It did pass the House at the state level, so now it is sitting in Senate, and I'm sure there's going to be back and forth on possibly negotiations on how to move it through to get it signed. She did talk about some of the elements that could be discussed going forward to get it through completely. Her biggest thing, and she made this promise, is that she wants to make sure no funding is taken away from the public education sector, so she's gonna really try, she'll work and she'll get it through, but she wants to ensure that she sticks to at least that and makes sure that we get everything we deserve. There was discussion amongst the other districts and even ourselves about the tax reassessments, and how that seems to be a common issue coming up throughout other districts as well, and how can we maybe address that going forward? And also, early intervention was mentioned as well, and the need to support the supplemental request in the budget for those programs. I did share this information with the board last night, along with a slide about that bill, so if you have more questions, we can go further into it. I don't want to do that necessarily right now, but we do have a lot of information as it makes its way through the state. He did leave his email for us, the Chief of Staff, if we have any further questions, so we can reach out directly to her office. After they did leave in the second half, of course, there was further conversation about that bill amongst the districts, and then it moved on to the federal level of things. There was discussion of the E-Rate federal program. We're hoping to get answers soon with everything up in the air. I believe there's still discussions going on with that program, and also some concerns with Title III funding in some of the proposals that are being put out. However, with nothing formalized, it's all just kind of a wait-and-see, but just kind of being prepared and looking ahead. This was the final meeting for this year. However, I was told, we were told as a group that any updates that happen, they will let us know immediately if there's any changes on those issues. If anybody has any questions, I can do my best to answer. Okay, thank you.
Tanya, any other, no other new business from you? Tanya? That's it? Any other new business?
Last meeting of the year, I want to wish everyone a very safe and happy summer vacation. It's well-deserved after everything we've gone through this year. I want to say officially, congrats to Stacy, welcome to the board. And, yeah, that, that was a graduation was fantastic, even though there was a change of plans and it was brought inside, I thought it was really great. Jay, your speech was fantastic, I, I thought. And that's really it right now.
Thank you. Anique?
I also wanted to welcome Stacy to the board and say, I want to totally embarrass my son right now, who will be heading off to the high school next year. Hi, Avery. That's it.
Thank you, Anique. Patty?
Yes, I'd like to welcome Stacy, welcome to the table. Graduation, I was able to Zoom this time, and they streamed it, so I got to go one-on-one. Speeches were out of this world. Jay, you killed it. You did such a good job, and it came from your heart. Dr. Finerty, yours too. I mean, it was just seeing all those kids and all their accolades and just having a good time, but it was really, really nice. I just wish everybody a safe summer and have fun. Yes, we're sunblock, yeah. But thank you for everything you do, guys. And Steve back there.
Thank you, Patty. Bill?
I will echo the welcome to Stacy. You're gonna have fun, and graduation was a success, even though it got moved inside, because Mother Nature does not like us.
Thank you, Bill. Dr. Finerty, any new business?
Just welcome aboard, so.
Three quick things. One, welcome aboard. Two, our fellow board member, Louis, he and his wife have had their second child and first, and little son, Baby Louis, we, we call him. So congratulations to you with that. And then lastly, today is Denise's and my 53rd wedding anniversary, so we're celebrating it by me being here, and she's, she's sitting at home listening to this, so with the dog. So hi Denise, love you, happy, happy anniversary. I'll be home soon.
Sorry, I couldn't resist.
What, you couldn't resist?
It's probably a good gift for her.
What's that?
It's probably a good gift for her, you being here.
Yeah, she's, she's put up with a lot in the past 53 years, and it was many years before that. Seventh grade, seven, when we were 12. She's, yeah, she's dealt with me since she was 12. Bless her little heart. Hello, hon. Ashley?
Welcome, Stacy, and just everybody, have a wonderful summer.
Thank you. Jim?
Being so original, welcome. You can still run. And thank you all very much for everything, because you guys make it happen, so thank you.
Jim, thanks. Louis?
You're looking tired, boys. I am. It's, I mean, you know, only have a one week old at home, so not a lot going on, and, you know, 9:15 board meeting here. So I'll try to keep this moving. Jay, happy anniversary.
Oh, thank you.
It's fantastic.
And Denise.
And Denise, of course, I don't want to forget Denise, I'm sorry, Denise. Welcome to Stephanie and Stacy. I got that right, right?
Yes.
Stephanie, Stacy. And I just want to thank all the staff for, you know, all of their work this year. You know, a lot goes into making a school year happen, and really appreciate everything that all of you have done, so.
Thank you, Louis. So Stacy, is this all you expected and more?
Somewhat, somewhat, but thank you. No, I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to a challenging year, and like Louis said, you know, thank you for all, to all the staff, and to all the teachers, students, parents that were involved this year. It was definitely- It was definitely an interesting year, but we overcame it. I also like to thank my family for supporting me through this process, my husband, Brian, and all of my children, who are voluntold on a daily basis for all the volunteering activities that we do, but in the end, it will help them. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Moves us to agenda item fifteen, public comment. Any comment from anyone in the room? Stephanie, is this what you thought you were getting into? And more, yeah. It's wonderful, isn't it? Yeah. Is that your husband with you? No?
This is a long story to tell.
All right, I got you. All right.
Well, let me take a second, I'll call attention to who that is. That is Scott Matts, who is the husband of Sarah Matts.
Thank you for being here.
So appreciate you're still part of the family.
Any additional public comment in the room?
I just want to thank the board members, and many of you, so I'm glad that stepped up to the quick change from outside graduation to inside graduation, and helped us man the doors, and helped us man ticketing, and that whole operation, we had a major sudden change about five oh five. And the whole team collectively, people in this room and outside of this room, we started graduation at six fifteen. So we got it together, and we all stepped up and made it happen, and appreciate everyone doing it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Anything online? Nothing. Out of the hundreds of people that are listening, there's nothing? That moves to a motion to adjourn. Meeting is adjourned.